And in between. There's a clay sewer connection for the stormwater. Sometimes it gets backed up.
Oh.
So bad.
The microphones are officially on.
Mr. Chair, ref 6, if you wanna get this ball rolling.
Wow, it's a little different than normal, huh?
The last, like, three meetings, yeah.
Yeah, actually, it's more like normal, I was telling Katie. Yeah, alright. Okay, I will call the June 11th, 2019 meeting of the planning board to order. We'll begin with a roll call, starting on my far left. Justin Booton.
Evan Seer.
Sam Skoggan.
Katie Boss.
John Engler.
Alright, so we are going to begin with a public hearing on the proposed text amendment to Article 13, Environmental Performance Standards, Section 60-1038 Odors. And, um, since no one is in the audience, uh, just the members know, we're gonna proceed as a normal public hearing, and I won't go through the spiel of how it works because we all understand.
Do you need to, um, acknowledge voting members?
Oh, good call. Uh, huh, huh, huh. Alright, so, uh, we have the three regular members absent tonight. That means that our two associate members will be, be full voting members for, uh, the remainder of the meeting. It's also worth noting on public record that two members of the board, um, have recently chosen to resign, uh, because of conflict, uh, with other responsibilities. Those members are, uh, Mr. Nate Hamlin and Mr. Mark Tardif. So, um, it looks as though at least one of our associate members will be a full voting member for the foreseeable future, and, um, we'll talk about how we'll proceed with that. In the past, we've done in every other meeting, so, but we'll handle that next time. Alright, we ready for the staff report?
Okay, um, tonight, we are having a public hearing regarding the envir- environmental performance standards. This is a section and of the zoning ordinance. Um, the environmental performance standards are very important in reviewing all projects. Um, some would say they are the basis for zoning. Um, the purpose of these, um, performance standards is to ensure that no new development occurs which may have an environmental impact that could be detrimental to the city or neighboring property owners, or cause nuisances directly or indirectly. And it applies to all nas- non-residential uses in the city. Division 1 of the environmental performance standards include: smoke enforced by the fire department, noise, which is usually enforced by the police department, vibration, also by the police department, odors, typically economic development or a code enforcement officer complaint, air pollution, which includes air contaminants of all kinds, usually enforced by the fire department, and electrical disturbances or interference, um, which is, um, policed by the elec- city electrician. Tonight, we are focusing on the odor ordinance. The current language is fairly minimum. Uh, it in consists in its entirety of Sections A and B, in which it's currently states the term odor threshold is defined as the minimum concentration in air of a gas, vapor, or particulate matter that can be detected by the abutters of the property in question. B, no development in any zone may generate any odor that reaches the odor threshold measured at the lot line of the enterprise generating the odor. So, the changes that are being applied, um, you'll notice from your two pages of text, has it, uh, expanded quite a bit from those two, uh, bullets A and B. Um, these addition and changes will apply to all land uses, not just non-residential land uses or commercial uses, except in the AGRP, the Right to Farm Ordinance supersedes the odor ordinance. Um, it does add statutory authority, administration, and enforcement. That's the primary bulk of the text, is in the authority, administration, and enforcement. It adds verification of a complaint by a panel at the property line, so that it isn't a single person making a determination. It has to be determined that it occurs beyond a property line or at places where people live or work. It can't be someone driving by and say they have a problem with something. It has to be something that is, um, that actually impacts neighboring properties that is, that occurs on a continuing or predictable basis. Um, assigns investigation and enforcement to the Economic and Community Development Department to work with businesses to address mitigation measures. So that is the total of, of how this is going to be impacted. So it is broken down into several sections. Um, nuisance con- nuisance control and abatement, which is the primary purpose of this ordinance. Um, it establishes purpose, help, public health, safety, and welfare. It establishes how do you determine an objectionable odor, an objectionable odor determination, um, how it applies applicability to all existing and future uses, um, an observation method, and enforcement. The predominant, um, elements of this document are in the enforcement section. So, uh, typically, um, this is standard, uh, language which allows the authorization under the state, um, home rule, as well as the main constitution, um, in which the city can seek judicial remedies in order to protect the inhabitants of the city, uh, and individuals. It establishes administration enforcement through the code enforcement officer. Um, and it establishes the purpose by stating that the city finds that because most odorous pollutants have a complex chemical composition and may elicit a bo- broad spectrum of responses by the receptors, special methods must be employed in their measurement and characterization, although analytical data are more precise and may be useful in identifying a source. It is the human response or the sensory data that is most critical in determining the necessary degree of odor control. Analytical data may be used to specify permissible emission levels from a source, but sensory data must be employed to assess the impact in the surrounding community. The later is the city's primary concern. So the determination, um, essentially is, obviously, most of these things come from a complaint or a complainant. It's not like people are gonna go around with their noses in the air trying to find these things, usually, these, these kinds of things come to us through a complaint, um, which can be determined by creating a public nuisance as the determination by common law. The erection continue- continuation or use of any building or place for the exercise of trade, employment, or manufacture, which by noxious exhalations or offensive smells becomes injurious and dangerous to the health, comfort, or property of individuals or the public. Or, all members of a panel consisting of a representative from the Economic and Community Development Department, Police Department, and Fire Department shall investigate complaints to determiny, to determine following, to, to make a determination following concurrent personal observation that the odor at the property line of the source, based on tax maps or elsewhere, there's something about the syntax that's a little off, or elsewhere in the city is objectionable, taking into account its nature, concentration, location, and duration, and are able to identify the source. So essentially, this is establishing a, um, three, that three people need to make a, the same determination at the property line using the maps, um, and that there's a duration attached to it, uh, nature can be determined, and a concentration. And it can't be at a moment, it has to be over, over time, so the duration element is important. We move into compliance, um, which is applicability. No odor source, land use facility, or activity shall be exempt from complying with the odor management standards contained in this article because of grandfathering or because of being an existing use facility or activity at the time the standards were enacted. The odor standards apply to all existing and future odor sources, land use facilities, and activities in the city, except as otherwise provided herein. There aren't really many exceptions provided herein. The observation procedures. Odor observation shall be undertaken to arrive at a determination that an objectionable odor exists, and shall be at or beyond the property line or at or near places where people live or work. So, in this case, if, um, there's a complaint from a neighbor, um, they're, maybe they're out in their backyard, or at their plate, in their back playground, or front yard, um, and they have a complaint, we would go to that site or source, so that people can use their property with the expectation that they don't have to have this objectionable odor on a continuing basis at their home. So that is one thing that we'll try to do in terms of near places where people live or work, um, and it is going to be primarily complaint-driven. The enforcement is essentially the, the longest part of this. Um, it includes a whole series of steps, um, with the, uh, attempt to remedy the situation, um, directly with the owner, um, letting the owner know that there is an issue, and moving forward through a series of steps to address the issue. In the event that the Economic and Community Development Department receives complaints that smells or odors are detectable beyond the property line, the following process shall be used to correct the problem. Within seven days of receiving a complaint, shall be investigated, um, investigate the property to assess the situation, and discuss compliance with the business operator, including but not limited to asking the business operator what is being done to mitigate odors. Um, when the department detects odor beyond the property lines, or the, and/or the operator indicates that odor management provisions installed within the facility are not being followed, then the department shall provide verbal notice of violation to the operator with instructions to comply. So this is the fairly simple, let's talk to the owner and see what, see what the situation is, and, um, expect conformance within 10 days. So this continues, um, I think there are actually like seven steps to, in enforcement. If complaints per, um, complaints persist, then, and the odor still continues to be observed without substantial dimin- diminishment, um, the department shall assemble the, a panel authorized as described above to investigate the complaints. And that would be someone from police, fire, and, uh, economic development. Someone hopefully with a really good nose. Um, and the panel, um, will observe the odor issues after the 10-day period as described above. If they continue past that 10-day, um, point and the, and the complaints persist, they shall notify the operator of violation in writing, and require notification of conformance with 10 days. So now we are 20 days out. It is now a written complaint of violation and the need to comply. This moves further. Um, if, uh, after that 20-day period, they can, continue to observe the, um, issue, odor issues, um, code enforcement shall provide a second written notice of violation, uh, assess a citation for a first violation, as specified under Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2, 610, penalties, and require the operator to prepare an odor control plan that meets the requirements of Article 13 Environmental Performance Standards of the zoning ordinance, and any relevant sections of the NFPA, Chapter 54 Ventilation, or Chapter 38, as applicable. And these are standards that apply primarily to the ventilation, uh, systems and processes for marijuana manufacturing facilities that are in the NFPA, um, fire prevention, uh, and ventilation standards for buildings. Um, and submit a written report from a mechanical engineer or odor management specialist with recommendations for modification, improvement of the ventilation system within 45 days. So now we've gone from verbal 10 days, written another 10 days, 20 days in, now we're at a, um, a violation notice, um, with 45 days, within 45 days, and installation of recommendations and notice of compliance within 60 days. So, the, um, control plan can be submitted within 45 days, so now you're at least two plus months out, almost two and a half months out from the initial complaint. Um, and you have another month, a month and a half to comply. So now we're at, ah, almost a half a year. So it's, it's a slow process, um, it does give people time to address issues and address them in a, in a, um, progressive fashion. If the operator has not submitted the required report within 45 days, or if the operator has not submitted evidence of compliance within 60 days, as described, um, they shall provide a third written notice of violation and assess a citation for the second violation. And those assessments of citation are the small penalties that we apply for any violation. They're fairly, um, low in dollar value, a couple hundred bucks, um, but it's a punitive measure that, that indicates seriousness. If the operator, now we're moving to five, if the operator has not submitted the required report within 60 days as described above, or if the operator has not submitted evidence of compliance within 75 days, the code enforcement officer or their designee shall assess a citation for a third violation. So now, the business owner has three violations on their property for non-compliance. They have been cited three times and are showing no evidence of movement towards a solution. The Chapter 14, uh, business license, they'll be temporarily suspended, if applicable. If the operator has not submitted the required report within 75 days as described above, or if the operator has not submitted evidence of compliance within 90 days, the city manager shall ask the city council to permanently revoke the business license per Section 1448, as applicable. So essentially, this is giving, uh, a business owner, uh, almost a year to come into compliance. Um, by the time these citations are written, follow-up, um, violations are, are implemented, and plans being asked for submission, and compliance asked for submission. By that time, upon request of the city manager and as directed by Chapter 14, the city council shall undertake the required process to consider revocation of the business license. And that concludes the entire section on the environmental performance standards for the odor ordinance as amended. Any questions, concerns, discussion?
Is the process expedited when it's determined that it's a noxious emission, or is really detrimental to public health and is not just kind of a nuisance?
Yes, um, and that's, that's a good point. Um, currently, as I mentioned before, we have several, um, different avenues. For instance, if, if this is coming from a factory, um, you know, if you have a, a, and I'm moving back through this quite quickly, I'm sorry. So, for instance, um, odors are complicated, you know, we've all smelled burgers burning somewhere a block away, when you know the grill's kicked up, and it comes and goes, and then it's gone. Um, we all know when someone's got a fire burning, um, and when there's air pollution, you know, th- there can sometimes be an odor to that. So, um, when it's not very noxious and it can be immediately smelled, I mean, it's, there isn't anything that says, you know, you, you gotta take care of this right away, except us going there and say, you gotta take care of this right away. Um, w- whether or not there's a cease and desist, that isn't included within this. Our first step is to investigate what they have in place for mitigation, and hopefully, there's ventilation and the home occupation permit or the business license was issued, um, with, uh, with those standards in place. Uh, if you've re- read through the marijuana ordinance, you'll realize there's an entire section on ventilation equipment, and getting, having your, your, um, property inspected. So those are ki- the kinds of things that would already be in place, hopefully, with the kinds of businesses that this is geared towards. However, any other type of manufacturing facility, uh, could be producing odors as well. Ideally, they are also under the same kinds of rules and restrictions from a ventilation perspective that any other business would be.
Uh, do you have any information on the types of odor complaints that the city receives now, prior to the creation of this?
Well, you know, anecdotally, occasionally, we'll get someone coming in who will complain that their neighbor or somebody is, is really s- marijuana, wherever it's being grown, is really smells, and they can't see it, it might be in someone's house. Um, those are the kinds of things that, right now, we are not necessarily doing anything about. But that's, and it's, it's generally happenstance, we have not really received many formal complaints. Most of the complaints that we see from code enforcement are, are much more serious in terms of, um, habitable conditions and trash and those, those kinds of nuisances. Even, I mean, we're not getting, we won't get a code complaint regarding a marijuana smell.
Right.
We might anecdotally have people come into the office with something else and, and say, oh my gosh, it really stinks in my backyard, but they don't actually file a complaint.
Okay. What, what about like industrial sites? Do you ever get any complaints about those? Because I think that's a little more applicable, you know, business versus home use.
Um, we don't necessarily get those complaints. Usually, those are much larger parcels.
Sure.
And they are similar or like users.
Yeah.
Um, not necessarily out and about in, you know, their backyards.
Resonance, yeah.
Right? Um, so we don't typically get those.
Makes sense, okay.
Um, so, does the city then think that the adoption of this ordinance will not create the opportunity for neighbors to sort of sabotage on neighbors? I mean, what happens if, because so, I think some people actually don't like the smell of fast food restaurants, for instance. And you actually now have an ordinance with teeth. Um, so is, is there any concern about that?
Yes, I mean, I could see that, that, um, as soon as, as soon as there's the opportunity, um, there could be, there are, there is more teeth, definitely. Um, however, I think it is, um, public health, safety, and welfare that's being put forward here. Um, we all have to breathe the air, share the air. Um, it is being a good neighbor to make sure you're not causing, um, pollution, or noise, or, uh, odor, or air to your neighbors. So, um, constitutionally, it is looking out for public health, safety, and welfare. Hopefully, we'll, we'll all be good neighbors and not abuse, um, this ordinance. And I think good faith efforts are very important, um, with, with, um, neighbor grows, any grows that are occurring in residential areas, they are limited into, to their location. Um, they do need to be within, um, a building, within the structure, um, within the home, not in, um, a greenhouse in the backyard, which might not be insulated or ventilated. Um, so those kinds of things might be impacted because they are currently not allowed by code, and would not be in the future. Um, grows need to be occurring in the home, in the structure, inside a building, in residential areas. So, hopefully, those, they have ventilation, and they can, um, take steps to further insulate those rooms where the grows occur.
Is there fear of fines associated with a citation, or is that just a letter?
A fine.
Yeah.
Um, the violation, um, the reference there is to, um, whenever there's a, a citation or a notice of violation, and a citation, there's a fee associated with it. It's a very, uh, I think it's a fairly minimum fee, and that's the reference to, um, yeah, another section of the code, Administration, 2-610 penalties.
Audrey, uh, NFPA Chapter 54 and Chapter 38, are those specific only to, um, marijuana?
They, there is a section that is specific to marijuana, yes.
Are the section that's?
As applicable.
Is it only specific to marijuana, or is that?
Uh, let me get, let me find that reference. Oh, um, NFPA Chapter 54 is ventilation for, for most businesses or, or, um, facilities. And Chapter 38, as applicable, is specific to marijuana.
Okay, so, so Chapter 54 is not specific?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause m- my concern would be that you would be imposing a standard on a business that it would not otherwise have to meet, because?
Well, we're stating it's relevant.
It wasn't previously required to meet that, that chapter, right? So, um...
The statement is just, uh, any relevant sections of NFPA. And, and they are, they are very specific to different types of uses. So if you are running a, uh, let's, even the, even the firehouse, they, you know, when they turn on their engines, they have to have their exhaust hooked up to a hose, you know, so, I mean, they've got a specific standards that they have to meet.
Okay.
So those are the kinds of things that are specific to specific industries.
Um, and, uh, wha- what was my next thing here? Um, so this disc- this is really specific to ventilation, right?
Being the primary filter for odor.
R- r- right, so, I, I guess my question being, you, you know, what, what happens if this odor is not emanating from within a building? I mean, if this is an odor that's being generated exterior to a building, most of this is not applicable, is, is not applicable and impossible to meet as, i- i- if you're a business owner, and let's say I own a, let's say I, I own a, a, a small muffler shop, okay? And let's say, um, outside, I happen to have, um, a place where, I don't know, where we, where we dispose of parts, and it's just, you know, it's been here for, for, you know, a thousand years in a day, and it's just got that real sort of musty old oil smell to the area, and by golly, it's, you know, 20 feet from, from the line. And you, you're gonna smell that, right? But, there's no way the owner of that shop can go and ventilate that area. I mean, it would require building a space around it and, and venting it, so...
Well, it may be as simple as, you know, covering it, shielding it, finding ways to mitigate. Um, it's really just about mitigation. What are, what are you currently doing to mitigate? Uh, what can you do to mitigate? And, let's see if that helps.
Okay, um, 'cause I guess that was sort of my concern when I had, I had read through this, was that I thought it was, um, so specific as to be, um, almost not applicable, but it has to be applied, so how, how does one apply something that can't be applied? You know, that was sort of my, my concern there.
Well, and, and I think, um, this also has to, has a duration effect. I mean, let's say we get a complaint, and someone, someone says, oh, this is really bad. So, code enforcement goes out there, somebody goes out there, they don't smell anything. They go to the property line, it's like, well, you know, wow, there's nothing really going on here. Because it might be momentary, it might ha- not have the duration, it might be only present during certain times of the day, um, it might have been intermittent, it might have just been a one-off.
Right, so, this leads into my next question, in terms of duration. What is the standard for duration? If this is something that happens, you know, for three hours every Friday, does that meet, does that meet a duration? Does that meet a, does that meet a standard for duration? What is, what is that standard?
Well, that's a, that's a really good point. Um, you know, when you, you look at noise standards, DBAs are attenuated noises over, you know, certain periods of time, we have noise standards at night versus day. This isn't that finely granulated at this juncture. We haven't said if the noise is a twen- or if the, the smell is a 24-hour, uh, versus if it, if it, as you said, lasts for three or four, so, we haven't gotten that granulated in it. I, it's going to be primarily complaint-driven, and I think we may need to modulate as we go forward and, and realize some of these nuances. It's not something that's easy to define right now, in terms of...
Yeah, I, I understand that. I worry that if we don't have a definition, we will put ourselves as a municipality in sort of a bind, um, because our expectation for what duration might be now may not be what the completance, uh, expectation is. And then how do you resolve that? Um, whereas it, it might be better for us to develop a, a minimum standard, um, recognizing that this is our first go at it, and that might need to change, but that we have something we can at least sort of hang our hat on. Um, the, the, the next question I have is, how does the cur- how does the city currently deal with odor complaints, um, with regards to odors that are normal to a specific zone? For instance, in the general business zone, one could expect to run into a myriad of odors, some of them, I, I think reasonably being considered objectionable by, by many... I, I think reasonably being considered objectionable by, by many individuals. Um, how does the city deal with those complaints right now? I- i- if, if those odors, they're reaching beyond the property line, but you're in the middle of, of general business?
Well, frankly, we ha- we haven't had that many. Um, when we do have them, typically it's like a burger joint or something like that, where the grill has gotten or the ventilation is, is gotten to be a problem. Um, and at, if it's continuous, I think that's part of the problem. Um, if it's continuous, then someone would respond and check it, make sure their ventilation system is working properly, that kind of thing. Um, but generally speaking, I think people's expectations are, this is gonna be impacted by people's expectations. You know, people tend to expect to occasionally get a waft of a burger after, you know, noon or something when the grill fires up. Um, they, those odors tend to go away. Um, or you, you go to get your, your tires changed and you go by a tire shop and it's like, oh, my god, close the door, the tires that, you know, emit. Um, but we, it's not something that people typically complain about too much in a commercial area. The problem is, is more relevant when you get into residential areas where their expectation is that um the worst thing that they'd have to deal with is um the smell of cut grass or somebody's, you know, barbecue next door.
Okay, um, and I just mentioned a general business zone, but sort of on the other end of that spectrum would be, for instance, our agricultural zone. Um, you mentioned earlier that the court of cloak, the colloquially described right to fire, right to farm um laws supersede this. Um. Does the city receive complaints with regard to uh odor in the spring or, or in the fall? And how, how does the city currently deal with that?
You know, honestly, we do not get that many complaints. Our complaints um mostly are from, um, they're mostly property uh issues that have to do with trash, debris, noise from the police department, um, those kinds of things. Uh, there may be uh burns, you know, open burns, uh to, they'll call the fire department to make sure it's controlled and it's allowed. Um, but honestly, we don't, we don't get that much in the way of complaints where there's an expectation that, that direct action is taken to stop it.
Okay.
Is uh, is data about those different types of complaints ever presented to the city council or the planning board annually or otherwise?
I'm sorry? What was the first part?
If data about, like, the number of odor complaints, the number of trash nuisance complaints. Um, and the reason I ask is because I think overall, this is a very well-thought-out and well-prepared draft ordinance. Um, it's pretty obvious that it was written because of the marijuana ordinance being drafted. Um, so I do think that the city has a little bit of a lookout on what are some of the unforeseen consequences. Um, because I don't think it's, you know, I think people, when they find out that this exists, they could use it um in a way that they haven't before because there wasn't a toothed mechanism, you know? So, so I would like, once, if, if this is indeed enacted, I would like to see information come back about how it's being used by the citizens and how it's affecting businesses.
Yeah, I, I understand exactly what you're saying, and I think it's a really good point to um, to get a listing of all the different types of complaints that we get, um, just so we have a good sense of those. Um, and I only know that because my office was next to the code en- uh, the code enforcement officer responsible for taking all the complaints, property complaints and all the other complaints that come in. Um, but if you, you know, as you look at our current language, um, you know, there it is a performance standard that is currently in the zone. The, the problem that we have with the current language is the enforcement mechanisms are fairly limited. And so you'll notice that the majority of this ordinance is centered totally around enforcement mechanisms. Um, observation, documentation and giving someone the opportunity to address the issue over time and by different methods. So, I mean, the policy is there, the opportunity for people to complain about it has been there. Um. But, but you're right, the enforcement part of it is really now where, where the teeth of this is.
Any other questions for staff? All right, I'll accept the motion to open the public input section of the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
No.
All right, I'll accept the motion to
Close.
Motion to close, is there a second?
Seconded.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, so, discussion. Um. Yes?
Go first. I, I don't see where it's gonna be an issue. Uh, it is a well-crafted uh document, but uh the right to farm would handle anything as far as our growth potential in any zone. Call it what you may, it's growth, it's farming, you're growing a crop. So that would handle any problems that you might have with that.
Isn't that only applying the ag zone though?
The outdoor grow is only allowed in the ag zone.
Yeah, so.
So the issue that I see would be in the processing and/or the sale of recreational and when people would, you know, do whatever there is, they're doing with it. And I don't know that I see a difference in, in all honesty, because it's been years. Uh, people that smoke irritate me. Uh, people that smoke marijuana, I'm sure irritates some people. And it just sort of seems, how, you know, how are we getting to the minutia of this? Well, you know, here's a smoking zone for a business outside their building. Can't smoke inside the building, you smoke outside the building. Does it now become an issue for code enforcement for that building, but say not the city building that has a smoking area outside their building? That's the only, that's the only problem I see with it a little bit, and it would be interested to see as John would, about how we're going to see this work out, because how is it a problem there but not over here?
It's, yeah, it's an expectation of civility, I guess, yeah.
It'd be, would have been nice to see complaints specifically from an industrial zone, to really or an excessive amount of complaints, to really, so I could put it in context and which is using restaurant odors at this point, or comparisons, so.
Most manufacturing facilities have extensive ventilation systems where you, you barely, you know, smell anything coming out of any manufacturing.
Well, drive-by Thomas Moser, I love it, I love the way that smells, but you know you're driving by a, a plant that fills wood, you know?
You've got, I mean, you've got your three concerns, I don't know how you wanna approach those, but between potential lack of
Teeth.
Teeth are just hardcore examples from general hype, you know, general business zoning and whatnot, plus your concerns. I, I don't know where we would wanna take this tonight. But I have hesitations.
Any, I've got a whole list, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna monopolize.
Well, the, you know, I'll, I'll probably I would like to hear yours first, actually. And I'll try to fill in the gaps.
Anyone else wanna speak? All right, so. Um. I, I have sort of an overarching fundamental issue that I'm struggling with regard to this. And that it seems tailor-made to a specific industry, but is applied to every single not even just business. I mean, this, this could be
Every, every zone of the city.
This could be just my neighbor, right? So my neighbor has, my, my neighbor literally has horses, okay? And, you know, am I gonna say, well, those horses are there, three sixty-five, and he's not actually a farmer? I mean, uh, they're, he's not farming those horses, they're, they're li- they're, they're jewel-right horses, you know, they, they, that, that's what they are, okay? Um, the, am I gonna be able to go and say, hey, you know what, you know, I, I don't like these horses here? So I, I worry that we were s- we were uh really trying to um be head of the game with respect to uh marijuana use. Um. And I think that that was smart of us to do that now, instead of be completely reactionary. I am just worried that this um is too specific. And it, and it's one of the things that the board has, we really shy away from the idea of doing something in one spot, because we recognize it has implications across the entire city. Um, yeah, so I can think of probably that the most recent controversial one would be when we allow, when we uh rewrote the ag zone to allow for um manufacturing. And that meeting was a bear of a meeting. I mean, we took a recess, uh, there were multiple drafts written up during the meeting. Um, there were yeah, and, and, and that was a big deal, because we really wanted to make sure that we were doing something that was applying to the forty, forty-five percent of town that fell under that. So that's my big overarching. Um, however, with, with respect to the specific document, um, I think that uh our zoning ordinance is really poor at um uh being descriptive, and while all of us understand that the right to farm supersedes this. Um, for instance, I think something like that needs to be written in here. Um, I think that we, there should be a provision such that um a, a, a permitted or special exceptions use, uh th- there should be an acknowledgement that, that specific uses generate specific smells, and if you are in an area um that is zoned for something as a regular use, um, and you are next door to that, it is unreasonable for you to say that I should not be able to smell the basket factory next to me if they're, uh, if they are an allowed use within that zone. Um. I also worry about the enforcement, uh, I wrote a note sort of saying like, what about leapfrogging? Is there, is there a full reset on this? What happens if this person takes almost the year to comply? During that time, they say, great, I'm going on a three-week vacation. Bang, I complied for three weeks, almost a month, hey. And then I start over again. Did it, did it, right? I, I complied, there's no, I, I, once I meet the expectation for, for compliance, does this whole thing reset? Can I do that? Can I, can I sort of do that indefinitely? Um, I worry about that. Um, I like that we talked about having either plans or compliance. Um, I worry that the way the language is written, it allows someone to have a plan um without compliance? Just because of the, sort of the verbiage that was used. Um, and after hearing Mr. Engler's comments, I, I think it might be a good idea to add an additional provision in here that um, that, that complaints be tracked and be made uh available to the public. So that's my, that's my list, so. I'm sorry, I know that was, I told you it was gonna be a lot, guys, so.
So the applicability uh item, which would be, which would fall under D, compliance required applicability. Um, and there's a sentence at the, at the close that says, the odor standards apply to all existing and future odor sources, land uses, facilities and activities in the city, except as otherwise provided herein. That would be the point of making the land uses in the AGRP are exempt. Um, and any other provisions that you would want to
Right, that's where we'd put that.
Right.
Yeah.
Do the complainers have to be neighbors? Or can they just be any citizen?
You have to be impacted directly by it, and that's where it says um, uh where people live or work. So it, you, you don't have a, you don't have standing if you aren't impacted.
Well, I think the, but I think if you're really careful in reading that, I think it's just that it needs to be observed on the abutting property where the people would be on that property. So for example, let's say you have a house that's a quarter mile away, and you're like, I can smell it on the corner of my property. But if your house isn't there, you know, that doesn't count.
Well, you can be out for a walk, yeah.
Sure. Um, but I think the way that it's worded, I don't think it necessarily has to be the property owner that's filing that complaint. That being said, you'd have to be incredibly nitpicky to catch that, right? I think part of the problem here might be that, you know, letting good be the enemy of perfect. You know, you could think this thing to death. Um, I do understand John's um perspective of potentially having an abutting property owner just complain a business to death um just because they, they don't like being next door to that business. Um. So potentially having some additional provision there of like I, although, you know, even then, you know, I think that the city and having the economic development officer be the one that's intervening between the two and basically mod, like, mediating the situation, I think that that kinda personally, I feel like that solves the problem.
Yeah, you'd have to be really, yeah, you, you'd have to be really, really ticked or it's, it's an excuse being used to leverage a situation where you can
My, my worry being that those are the people that use these things. People that are reasonable wouldn't make the complaint, they'd tell, you know?
Right.
That's, I guess that's where I'm going with that.
But again, you'd, you'd have the city between those two parties to mediate.
Yeah, the city's required to follow the ordinance, so.
And there would have to be actual smells that were perceived by three different people as well, so you can complain, but there needs to be an actual smell for it to go anywhere, right? So, I'm assuming that the city would stop responding to people who complain over again without anything being real.
Well, what is the definition of nuisance under common law? Because it says or here.
I, I have a specific theoretical example I'd like to share very quickly, which is on the patio at the Firehouse Grill where I had lunch yesterday. There's a lot of cigarette smoking sometimes at night when there's a lot of patrons. The building that abuts is a separate property, so if there's a tenant in a second or third floor apartment that starts making serial complaints about tobacco smoke coming off that patio, I'm pretty sure the owner of the Firehouse Grill is gonna have a problem under this ordinance.
Well, and, and it's smoke, too. That has a different
That's a completely different part of it.
You know, yeah, it's carbon, it's bad for your lungs, and it's also odor.
Well, it, it could be the, the exhalation from the, the fryolator then.
Oh, that's true.
So either way, that person now has this leverage against that neighboring business.
Well, that's a mixed-use zone, and maybe that's something that we need to make a uh provision around. Because when you do have that mix of uses and you're living next to a bar, you have to have certain expectations and tolerances, or that's just not a good choice for you.
But also acknowledging that some things are just nuisance, like the fryolator, and other things are public health problems, like having secondhand smoke walking into your residential building, so being able to distinguish between the two is critical.
Mixed-use zones and abutting-use zones kinda have the same impact?
That's true.
Talking about a, an exception for a mixed-use zone, or maybe we're not, but that's what I just pick, grab from that. Abutting zones be involved in that as well. Well, wouldn't the cultivation of cannabis be a legitimate use of a mixed-use zone and thus not on appropriate basis for an odor complaint?
Well, and here's
Right, so then, it sort of becomes
Goes back to your key assertions.
Right, so then it sort of goes back to like, this whole thing was really written for marijuana, but then to make it reasonable so that someone's not just gonna, you know, yank the, yank the rug out from their neighbor, you sort of end up putting in a, a provision that says, well, if that's allowed here, then you can't complain about it.
I will say this, as a professional cannabis cultivator, I think that the odor of the crops ha- can have allergens that bother people when in very dense concentrations. So this, I think it is a legitimate public health issue. You know, I've heard people testifying up at a gust on public comment days about how cannabis farms next door to their properties have basically ruined their lives because of, they're sensitive to the odors being produced. So personally, I see this as legitimate, but I, I think that we should be concerned about how it's being applied, and um in mixed-use zones, I think, or, you know, general business is a mixed-use zone, for instance, right? Or, so I think that there probably should be an exception, because it's, it's a legitimate thing. I can tell you, my grow is making odors at the property line sometimes, and I'm already running a lot of expensive equipment. So there is more I could be doing. Um, but I, it's just interesting to think that if I had an abutting neighbor that just didn't like cannabis, that, then I could be looking at potent, you know, potentially a lot of very expensive investments.
Or didn't like you, or whatever, and had it, got mad because you parked in their space.
And, and it goes, again, the, see, we're sort of spending our time talking about cannabis, which is sort of the original kind of overarching fear that I had, is that this is applying to everybody, so now let's go back to the fryolator, right? So, I mean, best practice in indoor grows is to utilize So, I mean, best practice in indoor grows is to utilize ventilation. Okay, like that's best practices already.
Absolutely.
Best practice in a restaurant is to vent it out. Okay, so like. So. Sure, this, this really is requiring. Someone. Will use a marijuana cultivator, for instance, to make sure they're using best practice for their particular field, but. To take this and apply this to say a restaurant would be asking that restaurant to do something that is not normal for that industry.
And the property line is probably not a sufficient distance. Is that the suggestion that? The property line is probably not a sufficient distance at which to have this, pass the sniff test?
Well. I hesitate to say that, I guess.
What if, what if, what if you're on the same lot? What if you've got an apartment above it?
And it doesn't apply.
Now that sucks.
Well, I mean, you know.
I mean, you would, you would obviously understand that when you send a lease, but.
Okay, well, we've been asked to look at this, so we're gonna have to get to brass tacks, guys, so. We've heard some folks say. It's pretty good, just needs a few specific things. I'm clearly not in that camp, but we, we gotta figure out a, a way to move forward as a group. So. I, you, you guys know where I'm standing on this, so I'm gonna throw this out here. I'm gonna start sort of moving forward unless someone else does. I'll, I'll let, I'll let that be.
I'll just state again that I have no problem with the way it's written because. At a grow facility, to me, that's farming and that's all farming. It could be cannabis, it could be a pig farm, it could be an alfalfa lot. It doesn't make any difference, it's farming, that's taken care of and I would hope that the city. Would understand that.
But that's, that's not the implication of the ordinance is written because the right to farm will only apply in the ag zone. Where be, so. So my grow is in the general business, one of the general business zones, for instance, and so I'm not protected by the right to farm. Now, currently, I work with my neighbors as, you know, just, you just work it out and we do do mitigation for the. Health and safety of everybody, including my work staff. But. You know, so, so this would affect me and, and I'm wondering, you know, and, and I think that somebody who just has a problem with. My business, which I can tell you is actually really common in cannabis because there's lots of participants and it's getting very rivalrous and competitive. And so I could imagine that these sort of false grievance sort of complaints to try to target people and just mess with them because we see that sort of stuff.
But if those are false grievances, then wouldn't it be remediated by this ordinance as it's, you know, proposed that? People have to go and smell it and there has to be an, an actual issue, so nothing would happen.
There might be, there might be an odor of marijuana out in front of my grow, but you know what? Down Riverside Drive. The cemetery, they don't mind. Gagne Concrete across the street doesn't mind. You know, it's, we're in a pretty industrial area and so neigh- I've been there for several years and neighbors can't complain. So what would happen if the city received a complaint about me, for instance? You know.
Well, and I think.
Or any other cannabis grower where there's not a history of complaint and that person's been operational there for a long time.
Then wouldn't city staff be able to respond and say this is not a legitimate complaint and you're protected? It just feels to me like there are enough safeguards in place where there have to be legitimate complaints recognized by many different people and that there's a timeline and a procedure in place where. If people who are making false claims against an organization that you would still be protected by that. I understand that it's. Still kind of opening up the gate to that, but they could complain right now though.
Well, see, overall, the process is written to be very fair with, and I'm actually concerned about cost enforcement to the city. Because if there is a large volume of complaints once this is, if this were to be passed, then I would see a lot of. Trips for three city employees out to different locations where they have to assess.
Yeah, and I, I think further, when something is complaint driven, the laws applied inconsistently. So you, this, this grow could really, or, or business could really have, you know, lots of. Odors associated with it, but there aren't any complaints. No one shows up, no one penalizes them, they have no issue. Another area, might be in the same zone, same land use compositions, no complaints. Or lots of complaints and all of a sudden there, there's all sorts of attention paid to it. So the, the challenge with anything that is complaint driven. Is that it's complaint driven and it's not uniformly applied throughout the city. So that becomes the, the tough measurement from my perspective in terms of fairness. Because there isn't a standard that says, this is the degree to which you can smell. And, and once it gets to this level, then it's unacceptable across the board. So we don't have that degree. It's kind of like a decibels with noise. We have a, a, a meter that can measure decibels and say, yeah, you know what? You gotta take that down to here. After ten. But, but we don't have that, that degree. So, and what could be really offensive to one person could be like, eh, that's not very bad.
Well, and I guess that's the other thing, right? Objectionable, right? So I think. Maybe, okay, so. Maybe someone opens up a, a smoking parlor, okay? And people are smoking pipes and hookahs. I smoked a pipe for over a decade and I never once had someone tell me. Get out of here, that smells horrible. And quite it was, in fact, it was quite the opposite. I was with friends that were smoking cigarettes who've been asked to leave and then they'll turn around and had said at the time, ah, you, but you, don't worry, you're fine. At the end of the day, both are equally hazardous to the public health, right? I mean, it's, it's sort of becomes a, a cultural, what's. What's reasonable and what isn't. Are we gonna run into a situation where. These three individuals show up and. And. You know, because we do have sort of the, our fast food corridor there. You know, they, they go to, to a property, you know, right down the street and they say, oh yeah, we can totally smell this, but this isn't objectionable. They turn around on that same afternoon and go to a different business. And say, oh, but we do smell this, but this one is objectionable. Well, it's sort of, I guess what happens is. I. I worry because we. This has some. It, it was purpose written to have teeth. But it is a topic that I think is. Subjective and so because of that, I'm having a real difficulty.
It's, I agree that it's very subjective and I think it's interesting that you talk about culture as a part of this. Because honestly, I think in twenty years, there's gonna be a less. Subjective objection to the smell of cannabis crops in this state because. A whole generation of people will have grown up around them growing and gotten used to the odor. And I do, you know, I am reflecting now on the fact that we are kind of trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. I mean, the, the whole origin story of this draft is that it was in the marijuana ordinance and then. City attorneys advised it be taken out because it couldn't target cannabis, but now we're sitting here reviewing the draft and we're seeing it clearly does target cannabis businesses. So I agree with the spirit of it, guys, to be honest, because I'm having a vision of maybe three years hence and cannabis social clubs are legal in this state. And the city decides to license them and one gets put down on, you know, Main Street or down by the, the plaza or something. We need to make sure that not a whiff of pot smoke is getting out of that business to where there's children playing outside in the plaza in the park, right? So I, there's clearly a need to address the issue, but I don't think that we should say that in every zone of the city except ag zone. All cannabis operators must mitigate every molecule of odor at the property line. And I think that's what this basically is.
But we're not saying, we're not saying every marijuana grow operator, we're saying every single individual in the city must mitigate odor. To that extent with this.
Well, that is true, absolutely.
You know, so that's.
I'm just worried about the selective enforcement, which is the, the point I was trying to make, but, but I agree with what you're saying and that's a separate concern.
I'd be more concerned than, you know, of, of creating a nuisance to the city staff and like John was mentioning earlier. The excessive cost that might instill on the city. Again, I think that. With, I mean, obviously there's, there are teeth to this, I, which is the biggest change from what currently exists. I'm still not overly concerned about individuals grotesquely abusing this in the future. As a way to wage war on things they culturally do not agree with. But maybe I have too high of faith in human, human beings.
So it may come down to the objectionable odor determination. Item C, which, which talks about. The erection continuance or use of any building or place for the exercise of trade, employment or manufacture, which. By noxious exhalations or offensive smells. Becomes injurious and dangerous to the health, comfort or property of individuals or the public. And that determination is really probably what we've been talking about for the last half hour. How is that made? Who makes that?
Yeah, and I, and I think in particular, I think that you can noxious exhalations and. I think that's one, one thing that's, that's fine, but offensive smells. And then comfort, those two things I, I could see. Those are the areas in which someone would exercise some leverage and discretion on. Because you could say, for example. You know, I really hate the smell of cigarette smoke, but other people, you know, as Evan was talking earlier, you know. I don't like the smell of pipe, pipe smoke, other people might enjoy it. I find it to be very discomforting. Who are you to tell me that I'm supposed to be comfortable in my home and yet I'm not because people are smoking pipes next door at all manner of the day? So. You know, I, I think that. It's, it's more the piece specific about health or. Noxious, again, noxious exhalations, those, those I think are fine. I think that you, the city is really getting into. Potentially dicey territory by saying offensive or comfort.
I am processing this and I think my biggest issues are really driven under C. Number one and two. Because I think. I think if we were to eliminate one and two and we chose and, and we changed three to write, to begin with like. Upon receipt of a complaint, all members of a panel consisting of, if we were to say something like that. So anytime there's a complaint received, this gets triggered. If we were to. Begin that paragraph that, that way and end that paragraph with something along the lines of. In compliance with. Internal policies created and. Maintained by the Economic Development Department for, for determination. I would feel more comfortable because at least it means there's a public document. That is, can be read, that can be looked at, can be understood, a set of policies. And if, and if they have to follow a set of policies, it means that pressure can be put on to change a set of policies and now all those new policies need to be set. It does not completely sort of assuage my, my fears, but. I'm looking at. What are ways that my overarching fear can sort of be mitigated here? And I don't know what other people's response is.
I would agree with that. I like that. Because you're getting into such a gray area with one and two. We're talking about the odor of marijuana and, you know, something that could be dangerous to health while. Somebody that's allergic to flowers could have the same issue. So if we remove that and just leave it up to the people that are going out to check it. At least take that out.
Does put the onus on the Economic and Community Development Department and primarily in the sense of saying. We don't have standards that, that, that have a threshold. So taking into account its nature, concentration, location and duration. And are able to identify the source. Those are essentially the measurements that we would have to use to make a determination. And which factors matter and to what extent. And we don't have those standards currently.
No, and I think, I think that's why, in my opinion, if we were to put in here based on pol- based on policy. Developed and maintained by the economic department to, to do this. Then it would require the, the, the Economic and Community Development Department to say, okay, well. These, within our policy, the, we are outlining these, this is what we mean by duration, this is what we mean by.
Develop that policy.
Yeah.
Develop those standards that are clear.
But that we write that into this so that way it is, it is required by the ordinance that that policy be developed and maintained. I don't know, because otherwise it's just so.
Certainly be easier to respond to this if we did have that, those specifications.
In the absence of those specifications, isn't it possible for anyone to? Yeah, to respond any of it.
Well, no, they could. I mean, they could still, I mean, you would have to respond to them. People could still complain, but we haven't given the definitions. Or these definitions for them and then if we have a, a reporting that's associated with this. If we have to revisit it, at least we can come back and say, well, this is what we got. You know, we had twelve complaints near grow facilities and forty complaints near recreational use facilities. But none, you know, at least you'd know where you would have to attack the, the issue. I mean, there's not a lot you can do with grow other than ventilate and I'm sorry, if you ventilate up or out, somebody's gonna get the smell. That's just plain and simple. It's the same way with recreational use facilities, so. You know, you're talking about grease and everything else, you're gonna vent it outside. Well, somebody is going to smell it outside.
They are, and I think that's why if the, if the city, if we were to sort of. Put in writing that this policy must be developed, it does two things. It allows people that are looking at this to say, hey, I'd like to check out the policy. Prior to making this complaint, so they, they can understand what sort of grounds they might have. On the flip side, it's the same reason when we make a decision, we use findings, because without those findings, our decision is baseless. And is open to litigation and. And so on and so forth. So. As I'm processing, I'm looking, it's also a way for the city to sort of safeguard itself against. A complainant who just happens to disagree with the, the way that that panel three people. Proceed the odor when they were at their property because there's nothing written down to. To sort of hang their hat on.
Would the policy be developed immediately or would it be developed over time based on complaints? If there's, let's face it, I mean, we're, we're talking about a dead horse. If, if nobody complains, then the city. Would say that the policy that they've developed already would be fine. If they get complaints about a grow, then they would have a better basis to know how to develop the policy.
Well, I think that's the idea of having a policy versus an ordinance, right? Policies are internal and can be changed readily. You know, they, they can, they can be updated. But, yeah, yeah, so, no, no, that's, you didn't say ordinance, I'm saying, but that's why I like it as a, as a policy, we say, requiring a policy because then. And as far as whether it should be immediate or not, I suppose if it's in the ordinance, at that point, it's up to the city to decide whether they want, whether they wanna roll the dice. And have a complaint come in tomorrow and have to deal with it without the policy, even though they're required to use a policy. You know?
So it essentially would require us to develop standards for the nature of the odor, the concentration of the odor. The, the. Location of the odor duration and that there is an identifiable source. So those five criteria. Have to have measurement standards associated with them.
It's difficult, I think it's difficult to say, to say measurement standard. Because things are so subjective.
They have to be measurable or some.
However, however, for instance, when I think about, for instance, the nature, okay? The, in describing the, the, the measurement of nature, the policy really could include that. The, that the nature of the smell is only objectionable if it's a smell, if it's an odor that is not regularly. Associated with the zone on which it's found or something like that, you know, it's, it's. It, it, it doesn't need to be a, a, a measurement per se, but a guideline for how they're going to determine whether or not this thing is objectionable.
Well, I think, I, I, I know this gets into, the whole thing can be very subjective, I mean.
It is, it's incredibly subjective.
Flowers, I mean, they stink, right? So, but other people might think, oh gosh, they smell great, so. Where do you go with that, the nature of the smell and how? where do you go with that, the nature of the smell and how, how is that determined to be good or bad or objectionable or not?
I agree. And I guess I'm saying if we just sort of say, oh, well, I guess it's so hard to pin it down, we, you know, we shouldn't require there to be some sort of policy. Well, then when it, when this goes to be enforced, I have no, it, it is incomprehensible to me how the city could enforce this at that point because now it's a he said, she said. I'm the owner of the business, you're the complainant. I say it's not offensive. You say it's offensive. These three people said it was offensive, but they have no guideline for what that really is. So guess what? We live in a litigious society. I mean, we know where that's going to go. I'm just, I'm just thinking of ways to avoid that, you know? Like, I don't know. I don't know how we do that.
Were you, were you going to make a motion earlier?
No, I, I am not going to make a motion.
Of one and two? And incorporating policies?
I think, I think in the last meeting, I did call for specific motions based on the, the the outcome of the discussions. And I did that only to help the meeting move forward. But I think that we are split enough on this that I don't feel comfortable calling for a specific motion. So as the chairman, I'm not going to call for a specific motion from, from the board, because I don't think the board's sort of in the same place on this.
One potential issue with having the city develop policies, that also opens the city up for legal action because it could be argued that one business perhaps is treated differently than another. For example, as the policy develops and evolves over time, becomes more mature, the city gets better at doing these things, that it could be applied unevenly, which I think is a potentially a larger issue if you have a savvy attorney that picks, picks up on that.
Right. It's almost like if you have it in writing, you've got a set of standards that you can hang your hat on, but if you've got a set of standards that you hang your hat on, you've got something someone could put their finger on to say, oh, look, so you're
But, oh, sure.
Yeah, you know, it's sort of like
But, but also like if your standards change over time.
Yeah.
Like that, that can open the city up for legal action. Again, every single approach to this is going to be problematic.
Yeah, they absolutely are.
Not, not having it has its own issues. Having it certainly have, also has issues. I think that, I don't necessarily agree that this is a step in the right direction. I do think that this was fairly well-written. As much as it is, as you can write something that is essentially unmeasurable, except for by discretion and by people's sense of smell. I said it before, I'm not sure we should let good be the enemy of perfect.
Well, I think it's within your purview to make recommendations
Yeah.
on potential edits, concerns regarding words such as comfort, words that, or, or the recommendation that specific criteria or measurable criteria be established. Maybe some further research and investigation to how other communities have measured these kinds of complaints and odor issues.
Audrey, I believe that before someone mentioned that Colorado had already done something like this. It would be interesting to see what their ordinance is, if it's, if there is a statewide ordinance, or if there are particular municipalities that have ordinances about that. I would feel more comfortable seeing what they have done and what has been the reaction from the community and the use of those ordinances, if they are complaint-based, if they're not. I would feel more comfortable seeing those things before making any sort of recommendation.
Do you know that in California, they did not go back and amend some of these performance standards because they were already in place?
Yeah.
So I, I'm, I'm going to throw the, the following piece of caution to the board on this one. In the last meeting, we sent, we developed a set of recommendations that were broad recommendations without revising specific text. Because the council was asking us for essentially our opinion on that text amendment. What is in front of us today is not asking us our, our opinion, overall opinion. This is an actual text amendment. So we could choose to send general recommendations to the council and hope that they do something with them.
Or you could send it back to staff for editorial revisions. That's another way.
Send it back to staff for editorial revisions, but whenever we send this back to the council, we ought to send this one looking as much like we want it to collectively look as we possibly can. This is a much different process than than the, than the review of the, of the proposed text that we, that we looked at last time.
Can I ask a question? John, you were on the committee that helped develop these ordinances, correct?
No, but I did attend some meetings.
Tom, some of the meetings? Okay. I was not involved in the preparation per se of this ordinance, only on one element of research. So I, it may be to our benefit to see what other ordinances have been reviewed in this regard when this was evolved and developed. Unfortunately, I don't have that history to be able to say they looked at five marijuana ordinances and five odor ordinances that are uniform and picked this one or they did not. I don't, I don't know what this is modeled on. I do know that the original text for the marijuana ordinance was modeled off of several others. So the assumption would be that this section was taken from those as well. I would suggest any areas that you feel concerned over, that some that you've already mentioned, that you either make specific suggestions for text changes or further research or additions and deletions so that we can come back with another tack on this.
Should we request from planning to take a stab at the policies that were discussed earlier and address mixed use?
I mean, I really like it, but it sounds like that's sort of not a universal. And so I hesitate to ask staff to devote time to something that the entirety of the board is sort of not behind, because quite frankly, their time is precious and you know, so just, just because I think it's important doesn't mean that it's important enough for the staff to have to do it, or, or even if two of us, you know, it's, it's the sort of thing, I would want that to come from the entire board.
I mean, what's the specific proposal? Is it a proposal that you'd like the board to come to consensus on asking staff to create a policy that we could then review or what's the ask? Yeah, I'm in support of that.
I, I do wonder if we can't do some kind of quick lessons learned out in Colorado or Oregon. If, if in California, because the, they were just so advanced that there wasn't need to revise with legalization, then, then so be it. But I guess in Colorado would have lessons learned.
Well, we looked at, when they first brought this to us, we looked up some of the places in Colorado that had been, that had been doing it. But I'm sort of like Sam right now. I'd like to see somebody who actually wrote the ordinance because what you see when you look that up is litigation. You know, they said this and somebody didn't like it and they sued. You know, this person said that and they didn't like it and they sued. I'd like to see somebody who's actually written the ordinance out, be it from Colorado, Oregon, anywhere, that, you know, that they're, it's actually been working for six months, you know, to a year, and they've actually been able to do something with it. I have, as I said before, I have the issue with one and two on C, so.
Do we know if there are any other municipalities in Maine that have already done this? Is Portland?
I, I don't believe so. I do know that in talking with someone from code enforcement, generally, they had a smellometer or something of that nature. They had like a
Parts per billion.
Right.
It's, it's actually, there is a meter that you can get that will tell you how many parts per billion a certain odor is, but that's
Concentrations, yeah. And it's a pricey piece of equipment, I understand. It's not like
Very pricey and it's
Like the
And on a given day where the wind is blowing wicked out of the west, it may not be
It'll pick up dust.
Yeah.
It'll pick up any, any particulate that's in the air. So they're problematic behind that. But it would be interesting. I, I would personally feel better seeing examples of what other municipalities have done, other states have done to address this issue before making any suggestions or any actions.
Well, I think, I think Colorado, Oregon, and Washington are all good places to start. I mean, just pick any of the cities where that's, where they've had it for a while and just check with them.
Well, and it, and it could be as simple as looking at a community that has a high manufacturing industry or something of that nature just for their odor environmental performance standards.
Let's say, so yeah, we need to be more descriptive for staff. Are we asking staff to look at other odor ordinances that we can compare to this? Or we ask them specifically to look at how these other communities determine that an odor is an obnoxious or unacceptable odor? Because it's two different things to staff and, and I, I really mean it. Their, their, their time is precious. So I want, if we're gonna, if we're gonna kick this back to them, I want to make sure that we're going to get exactly what we're asking for and that we're not, we're not making staff spin their wheels looking for stuff that we weren't necessarily asking for. So that's, that's my question to the board. Are we asking
I'd like to see
For entire ordinances or, or specific measures?
I'd like to see odor ordinances that were enacted as a result of marijuana cultivation, cultivation. Because on, you know, you know, ours obviously hopefully will not be that specific, but it is a, it is a reaction to that. And I think the other communities have had similar reactions. I would like to see what standards they've put in place and how they've worded things to be equitable.
How does the rest of the board feel about that specific request?
I would go, sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. We'll start way down here.
I would agree with it.
Go along with that.
Okay.
I would agree with that. I think we still need to have metrics, though. I know that that's an additional ask, but I think that you can't have one without the other. We'll have metrics in them. Then I would agree with it.
So there should be a specif-, specific focus then on what the standards are, how this evaluation can be done, what the standards and metrics are, processes?
Yes, including metrics, specific metrics?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Here's a question for staff. City council is waiting on this. They've already done their first reading on the rest of the marijuana use ordinance. What is your impression if we wait an additional month? Because we, we will, we will pass their second reading of the rest, which means that the, the ordinance will go into effect with the current, the, the adult use ordinance will go into effect with the current odor ordinance.
Well, I, I don't, I don't necessarily think it is a bad thing. So just to kind of jumpstart this i- item, as you know, that they had, they had the second reading of
Oh, they had the second reading. There you go.
They've already had the second reading of chapter sixty zoning and chapter fourteen, the business license and permits for, for the ordinances. So the only thing that is being held is this item. It will not prohibit them from moving forward. There's nothing that would prohibit that. At this juncture, we are looking at the first applications coming in in July one for the existing businesses that are present. There, as, as we currently believe, there are three existing permitted retail medical establishments that meet the thousand-foot setbacks. Our applications are going to be accepted July one for all existing properly permitted facilities with those distances grandfathered. And the new facility applications will be, begin to be accepted August one with distances applied. If, if you think about the odor ordinance moving forward over the same time period, no one would be negatively affected at this point. The businesses that are in place, we haven't heard any complaints at this juncture that we've responded to is, and or at all. So I, while they would like to, to have them adopted simultaneously, I don't think it will harm anyone to do this over a longer period.
Okay. With respect to the rest of this document, how does the board feel about enforcement?
I think it seems reasonable, the timelines that are provided and the practices.
I agree. Agree.
I would still raise my concern that as written, submission of plans are as good as compliance. I would like to see it revised in each section such that let's, let's take an example. Let's see. Submit a written report from a mechanical engineer or order management specialist with recommendations for modification improvement of the ventilation system within forty-five days and installation of recommendations and notice compliance within sixty days. Okay, actually, that seems to be fine. Let's look at number four. Has not submitted the required report within forty-five days or if the operator has not submitted evidence of compliance within sixty days. That very well could be read to say even if you've submitted your plan within forty-five days, you need to be in compliance within sixty days.
Well, I think, you know, our, our department really tries to work with people. And if someone is showing a good faith effort and moving forward, we usually give them that time. And, and the way it is written, evidence of compliance, it says either or, within forty-five days, or has not submitted evidence of compliance. So they could be moving forward. Maybe their, maybe their contractor is backlogged, they've already, they've submitted it, they, they just can't get the report back.
I, I guess what I'm asking is, I would feel better about this if it said and. So i- if I, if I submit the required report within forty-five days, apparently I've met my requirement as long as I have this report kicking around, you know? You know, it's fine. I'm, I'm sort of grandfathered in, in perpetuity because I've submitted the, I've submitted the required report.
Oh, you're saying that that once you've, once you've submitted a plan, then you don't necessarily need to
Yeah, there's, there's no provision to say like, okay, you submit the plan. When do you have to be in compliance?
I think just changing the word or to and would solve that problem.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah. That solves that problem.
Can, can
A plan may take more than, than another fifteen days to get in.
As you pointed out, has not and if the operator has submitted evidence of compliance. So evidence of compliance.
Or moving towards compliance, you mean?
Right. So evidence of compliance could be, look, I've got the work order out. The guys can't be here for another sixty, for, until day seventy-five. But here's the work order that I have to have this work done.
Gotcha. Okay. Makes sense.
Does the board feel comfortable that we ask for all of those ors in each of these to be changed to ands?
Yes.
Yes.
How about down here? Okay. And I guess the, the last thing I'd like to see here. And, and the evidence is that I would like to see a a G. And I'm not sure what we would call it, but I, I would like there to be provision that each complaint be recorded. And, and
Reporting.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if it has to be, if we want to put that needs to be reported in here, but that, that each of these complaints needs to be recorded and tracked.
So a record is maintained and summarized?
Yeah.
Viewable record.
Yeah. I still worry about the idea of someone sort of slow-dogging this, kind of letting it, letting it kind of almost kinda letting it, letting it, uh, kinda almost come to the point where the license gets revoked and then going to compliance for a certain period of time.
Have to be continuous compliance.
Doesn't say it has to be continuous, what if I'm compliant for a month? So I've now met, I've now met, I've met, bang, okay, I've done, I'm at number five under enforcement. I meet that criteria.
Yeah, as I've-
And then a month from now, I go out of compliance. Do, does it reset?
Do you want a minimum, do we need a minimum time of compliance? Three months, six months, a year?
Well, that's my question to you guys. I personally have a sort of an issue with that, but again, I'm one individual on this board and, and we're sort of a collective making decisions, so. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's important for each of us to express our concern. That's why we were appointed the board, but it's also important for each of us to recognize we're on a board and that one of us can't make a decision.
I'm not concerned about that.
No, Katie? No?
No.
If you're compliant, I mean, it would generate another complaint. And if it was the same complaint, then I would hope the city would come out and talk to you about this before.
Okay, so-
Yes, you were compliant for a week, but you're out of compliance now.
So, all right, seeing that, I mean, I'm a minority there, I will, I will let that one go.
So I guess the question is, if it, if a business is in compliance for a number of weeks, doesn't matter how long, and the odor, odor issue comes up again, would that generate a new complaint starting at the beginning or would it continue?
If it's, unless it's a different, if it's a different odor, I, I mean, the, the science is that if you have a mitigation piece of equipment installed to address the issue, it should handle the issue. If the issue, if, if the mechanics fail or you don't replace the scrubbers or the filters or whatever is needed to maintain the system, then that's an issue. But the code enforcement officer would be investigating that. I mean, unless you just borrowed it from somebody else and temporarily installed it, I think, you know, we would notice that kind of thing and it would be part of the plan. So I think once, once the equipment is in place to mitigate, there shouldn't be any further issues unless it's a new odor or you're failing to maintain the equipment or scrubbers or filters that are required to keep it operational.
I, I may be searching for a problem that doesn't exist, so.
Yeah.
That's fine. The last thing I wanna bring up is, um, under A nuisance control and abatement, statutory authority, administration enfor- enforcement severability. In the first paragraph, in which, um, sort of the authority to enact this ordinance and enforce this ordinance is described, while I understand that the so-called right-to-farm law supersedes this, that is not written anywhere in here and I would like that to be incredibly explicit. And so I, in, in my opinion, the most appropriate place to do that would be at the end of the paragraph under A one, um, a sentence, uh, specifically noting that and making reference to that state statute.
I would agree with that.
I would too.
Yeah.
Yep, I agree.
Beyond that, the, so, uh, what, so to be clear, so that staff is clear, am I hearing that, um, uh, it looks as though we are going to table this? Someone's going to make a motion to table, um, and that we are going to ask staff to specifically look for examples of odor ordinances in other communities and states that have dealt specifically with the enactment of, uh, adult, uh, use marijuana, of marijuana. And that, uh, we also look at the, the, um, management standards or the, I guess, I don't know what we'd call that, uh-
Performance standards.
The performance standards, thank you, Mr. Engler, yeah. Is that, is that our specific direction to staff? Okay. Do, do we want to wait until next meeting to draft something based on that? Or do we want to ask staff to draft something?
I would prefer that we ask staff to draft.
Okay.
Do we have some other items we want to address?
Yeah? Yeah? No, no, not that we draft it tonight. Next meeting, I'm asking, do you want to see something in front of you that is a draft based on what?
Yeah, absolutely, because they might find something that's very copy-pasty. So if they find something good in their journeying, let's see it.
Okay, so within that, we're extending authority to Audrey to provide a draft if she finds it appropriate. Um, but let's not hold her to create a draft if she doesn't find something.
I hope I can find several and we can kinda like move it on.
Okay, great, do you feel like you have enough from us?
Yes.
On this one, okay.
I, unfortunately, I have one last question, guys. And going back to the enforcement mechanism, so de-licensing is obviously a big mechanism. You're talking about, there's also some kind of administrative fines that could be levied?
Yeah, there, there's basic code enforcement penalties. Um, this is the kind of thing that happens when there are repeated violations that the, um, and it's, it's general to any code violation, um, for first violation, second violation, third violation. I think it's a, a minor fee of like a hundred dollars. Um, it is in chapter two of the municipal code, administration, sections two dash six ten. And so for, for each repeated violation, the fee goes up, but the maximum fee I, I don't think is more than a couple hundred dollars.
So I-
Or it's a per-day viol- there is also a per-day violation, I think, after a certain period of time.
There, there is, okay, that could accrue over time. I, I, cause I have this concern, because I actually printed out from the city website the list of business licenses. And, um, obviously, you know, the grow houses are gonna get added to this, right? But this only talks about food service establishments, bars, you know, tattoo, uh, pawn shops, massage, bowling alley, roller skating. If the leather industry came back to Auburn and someone put a tannery down on the river, I'm guessing that there might be some odor performance issues. The city's not going to license that factory. So what would be the teeth for enforcement if there were complaints?
Good, good point. Um, this is be, there, not every business in the city requires a business license. This ordinance is being enacted under the business license provisions. So, um, it is requiring this business and, and that handful that you're reading there, those are the only ones that are currently required to have a business license. So, um, that's why it's being implemented this way, but I agree that, um, the business license forfeiture under the odor ordinance may not make sense because again, it's being directly applied to marijuana industry or business license, those businesses that are required to have a business license that would pay those fees, I believe.
So I'm wondering if, as the planning board, we can make an additional ask to invest, are there avenues where some kind of, not just the code fees, but I, I, I just, I would like to understand how the ordinance would actually be enforced in my scenario.
Well-
Unlicensed violators.
Unlicensed, you and your, and the leather tanning?
Yeah.
So there, there are general, um, code violations, period, for other types of businesses, not just those that have a business license. So you could have a, um, let's say, a, a, a business on Center Street, um, has, is doing something, dumping or, you know, doing something with their trash or doing something that violates the code. They would be given the same procedure of being noticed, given a chance to clean it up. If they don't clean it up, they're found in violation, then they're given a fee.
And are those financial penalties severe enough to influence, to make the-
The financial penalties that the city has established are not significant. Um, only when you get to, uh, like a notice of written violation, like the third notice that you've, to comply and you violate, you still haven't, I think then it can trigger a daily fee. But it is up to city management and departments to enforce that and follow through legally to make it happen. Um, sometimes those litigations can be expensive and, and time-consuming. And those daily fines and fees can, sometimes it, maybe it doesn't get to that point. And it's, it's up to the, to will of the, the management at the time to, to determine the extent of the penalties.
Is this a concern shared by the rest of the members of the board? We'll start on this end, since I've been sort of left.
No.
Uh, not to the same extent. I believe that, you know, if it became enough of a large public nuisance, I think the city would act and would implement a, a daily fine after a certain point. And, you know, I'm, I'm not as concerned.
I'm not as concerned, I have other legal avenues.
Okay.
I'm gonna let that one go then.
I'm sorry, you and I, you and I are stuck.
I, I get it.
You and I are stuck in a tough spot.
No, I totally get it, I don't want a tannery going-
We could always make a tannery business license.
Right, yeah, exactly.
That is, that is true, that is true.
Well, so, uh, not to belabor this, in that case, I'd be looking for a motion to table this item, um, until our next meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Under old minutes, under old business, uh, we have review of the minutes and a review and approval of the draft letter together, um, because obviously they go together. I hope you guys had a chance to read through the minutes. Because this is, uh, important, um, and because I think the minutes could affect the, the recommendation, I'm gonna ask that we review the minutes, so. And, uh, to make sure that everyone has an opportunity, I apologize for putting you guys all on the spot. I'm gonna start, um, with Mr. Engler, uh, down at, uh, my far right and ask if he's got any, um, anything that, uh, as you looked through the minutes that jumped out at you or that you felt needed to be amended?
Nothing jumped out at me, no.
I've reviewed them and nothing jumped out at me.
Same.
Same.
Okay. Do you prefer to be Ms. Boss or Mrs. Boss?
Mrs.
Why not just the boss?
Can I-
Actually.
What? No, well, in that case, can I ask that the minutes be amended to use Mrs. instead of Ms.?
Oh god, don't do it for that, I don't care.
Oh, you sure?
I really don't care enough.
Okay. I'm, I'm a stickler for that stuff, all right.
Appreciate it, though.
Okay. Um, all right. In that case, I'd be looking for a motion of approval.
So moved.
Is there a second? Seconded, uh, all those in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved. We will move on to the draft letter. I actually met with, um, I was able to meet with, uh, Audrey and Eric. And who's the new staff member?
Megan McCarthy.
Megan, and her exact position is?
She is a, a new planner, planner two. She will be working with the planning board, um, and will be here in the July meeting.
All right, excellent, so that everyone knows they're sort of back up to full staff or what you could call a full staff.
Yeah.
So, since we went right to left, um, I'm looking for, uh, specifically, do you feel that, um, this is what you said and, and what you feel we should be, should be sending to the council of this? We wanna make sure that what we're sending them is what we, what's here is what we think should be here, so. Mr. Booton, was there, did you have any comments on this? Mr. Carrier?
Pretty much happy with it.
Mr. Scoggan?
The only thing that I would add is that, you know, I think that we should strongly encourage the city to take the, uh, uh, legal advice from Bernsteinshire into serious consideration when, uh, considering further action on, uh, any proposed changes to the ag zone.
Okay.
I would have to agree, and I think that specifically looking at the recommendations or the concerns that were brought up by Bernsteinshire, they said twice they referenced that the, um, proposed changes to the ag zone are inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, two times. I think that's really critical and as a planning board, our job is to be reflecting what's in the comprehensive plan. And if we're proposing that we're making a change to forty percent of our land mass and that's outside of the scope of what's seen in the comprehensive plan, looking specifically at figure two point one and page eight of the executive summary saying that restricted or non-growth areas should not, are undesirable for development and that same area is almost exactly the same as the ag zone, I feel compelled to say that that should be one of the recommendations that we say. Not only are the lawyers saying it, but that the comprehensive plan does not support development in that area.
Mr. Engler?
I agree.
All right, so we sort of foresaw that we need to add in, um, a recommendation under additional discussion, which is why there's a number four reserved. So, uh, at this point, I'm gonna ask someone to draft what that number four recommendation would be based on, um, the concerns we've heard. I, I would echo them that, um, I think we need to make a recommendation that the, that the council review, um, the, uh, report from the Department of Forestry and Agriculture, which we also got-
Yes.
As well as the, um-
I think it could be as simple as making sure that it conforms with the comprehensive plan as well.
Can I make a suggestion for, um, your fourth bullet as, as you discussed?
Yes, please.
That the concerns of Bernsteinshire should be of first consideration in proceeding with this amendment.
Yes.
I think that sounds great.
Thank you.
How do we feel? Okay. All right, well, seeing as that was the only major concern, uh, we're gonna look for a motion and the motion should include the addition of number four as stated by, uh, by Ms. Knight.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
All right, so with those, with that amendment, your recommendation that this letter be, um, forwarded to city council at their, for their next meeting-
Correct.
At workshop.
Correct. And, um, as soon as you, like, you want me to stop in tomorrow to?
Yeah, I believe so. I think, um, I don't know that we will be able to get this on the eighteenth, um, but-
It's okay.
Might be the next one, the twenty-fourth.
I'll, I'll, I'll stop in, I'll stop in tomorrow just the same and then-
Okay.
It'll be signed for whenever. All right, uh, next we have miscellaneous, um, A, staff updates on the marijuana ordinance. We sort of got a little bit of that, is there anything else that you wanted to add?
I think we've covered a lot of that. Um, I just wanted to do you a quick run-through just for those of you who have not been tracking this. It has been, uh, adopted for the most part and we will be beginning, uh, including home occupation permits for caregivers, uh, in, on July one with new businesses coming in August one. Uh, the main features of the ordinance, some, some amendments were made since your, your last update on this. Um, retail uses are allowed in general business, general business two. In the form-based code zones, all of those zones, as long as fifty percent or more of the retail business is in age-related restricted goods. Industrial areas, as long as it's in conjunction with cultivation and or manufacture. Cultivation and processing allowed in GB and GB two as if accessory to retail and, uh, allowed in industry and ag. No marijuana businesses would be allowed within seven hundred and fifty feet of a school, medical or adult, um, school, to the school property line to straight-line distance to the business property. So it's property line to property line for the school zones. No marijuana businesses allowed within a thousand feet of each other except cultivation and manufacturing in the industrial zone and those joint uses. So, um, and if businesses are within the same parcel, they are allowed there, particularly if they're existing. Um, and up to three or four licenses can be, uh, allowed within one facility as well.
And I, I don't remember the specific outcome, but I believe those setbacks are not, are not lot line to lot line there, like door to door, correct?
They were amended, um, in committee, I believe. Um, so, uh, they, there was a lot of discussion around door to door. Um, and when they changed the school distance from a thousand to seven fifty, it was changed to property line to property line.
But that's also for businesses, the setback, that thousand-foot? That, that's the setback I'm specifically talking about?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Again, the caregivers, um, with less than two hundred and fifty feet of canopy must register, uh, as a home occupation and receive a home occupancy permit. Um, existing permitted and or licensed operations are grandfathered based on their existing locations. So when they come in for permit, um, July one, if there are distances that are less than the one thousand feet, um, they will be allowed. Um, the same may be true- they will be allowed. The same may be true also of those in proximity to school, but those businesses all ha- also have to meet the state standards. So the state standards are more stringent around school distances, so it will default to the state. Anything further, main features? The annual fee, we went, we went over. The fees have been calculated to pay for additional positions. Existing caregivers, I guess, again, are grandfathered but must register. All zones are subject to the odor control and abatement ordinance, which we've just been over. There are no out, there are no outdoor cultivations allowed except in the AGRP. The residential, the low-density country residential and rural residential also will not allow the same marijuana uses that are allowed in the agricultural zone. So agricultural zones, cultivation and processing only, no quote-unquote farm stands, there are no limitations on the outdoor grows. A standard setback will, would apply. The industrial zone, the intent is still to concentrate cultivation and processing in these areas. Multiple permits within one operation are allowed as long as they, retail is a complementary and not a standalone in those zones. The same distance limitations will apply within the form-based codes. But only, the retail would only be allowed in more adult stores with more than fifty percent of products to limit youth entrances, and it is retail only. So I believe I went over those other items and this should be coming online here this summer.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? All right, next item under miscellaneous, the planning board member updates and items for future agendas. Does anyone have anything they'd like to report? No? All right, excellent. Public comment?
I'm going to hand this out. This is just the update from the city council.
Excellent, thank you. All right, well, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right, there's a second. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Yay! Good job.